Does everybody remember that's taking part in the meeting? Any extraneous noises around your microphone causes it to key in, so if you're going to be doing anything other than speaking, please mute your microphones. Good afternoon, everyone. For the record, this meeting is convened with less than forty-eight hours notice, but participation will be limited to essential personnel via teleconference due to the COVID-19 warnings concerning persons at risk in certain situations. Taking part in the meeting this afternoon will be Second Ward Andre Bujol, Councilor Martha Ball, Chris Willie and Sven Rissom. Town Clerk Mike Patrick, Inroom Town Manager Jim Kern, Town Solicitor Catherine Marola, Medical Director Mark Clark, EMA Director Bill McComb, Peter Gemp and Police Chief Finn Carlon, also Building Official Mark Tilson will be with us. Furthermore, although this meeting was called under the Open Meetings Law as a result of the state of emergency declared by the President and as a result of the state of emergency declared by the Governor, and as a result of the emergency declared by the Town and New Shoreham, based on CDC and Rhode Island Department of Health Guidelines, members of the public will not be allowed to attend this meeting. We do thank Block Island Times as usual for providing the opportunity for the meeting to be streamed and available later on. Due to the predicted high winds this afternoon, audio and/or video communications for this meeting may become unstable. If we are, if we do start having problems, we may either pause the meeting or may have to continue, but we're going to play it by ear and hope for the best. On a personal note, I'd like to remind everybody that I have a long existing esophageal condition and allergies which cause me to cough occasionally. I'm experiencing those symptoms of other illness. I do sense, if I do sense a coughing spell, I may leave the room briefly. And as a result, Second Ward Andre Bujol will take over the duties as Chair until my return. I thank everyone for their indulgence. First item on the agenda is a vote to hold a meeting to address an unexpected occurrence, that being the coronavirus and our response to it and the impending deadline of our first emergency, our current emergency ordinance. It requires us to take immediate action to protect the public. I'll make a motion to hold a meeting.
Second.
Second by Andre. Any discussion?
Ken.
Martha?
Oh, that was me.
Oh, go ahead, Andre.
We got an email about, could you explain unexpected occurrence? Because when we put these in our agendas, it seems as though there's something new that we have to meet about. And just to be clear with the public, can you expun, expect, expound us to why that's in our agenda? Because I think it causes some angst when people see that on our agenda.
I defer to Council. Catherine, could you fill us in on that?
Sure. Sorry. Under the open government rules, that's the language that's required under the Open Meetings Law in emergency situations. And that's why it's phrased that way, right from the statute.
Right. And thank you, Kathy. I just didn't think a lot of people understood that. And that's why I wanted to have an explanation out there. Thank you.
Right.
Thank you, Counselor. Next item on the, I'm sorry, all those in favor, Andre?
Aye.
Chris? Willie?
This is a continuation, isn't it, from Saturday?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Should that be clarified? Yes, aye.
Thank you. Yes, it is a continuation from Saturday. Sven Rissom?
Continuation, aye.
Martha Ball?
Aye.
I vote aye. Unanimous to continue to continue the meeting from Saturday. Next item on the agenda is discuss an act on amending the Town and New Shoreham's COVID-10 Emergency Ordinance of March twenty-third, 2020. I believe the, I should mention if anyone wants to, Molly, are you there for email comments?
I am.
If anyone wants to email in any comments in real time to Town Clerk, they can go to townclerk@new-shoreham.com.
Thanks, Ken. That's townclerk@new-shoreham.com. This meeting's also being streamed live on YouTube. If you go to the town's website, you can find the link. The town's website is new-shoreham.com.
Thank you, Molly. Sven Rissom?
As to the point one on the resolution, I support moving from April fifteenth to May eighth. I also support following the state going from ten people to five people.
Okay.
For clarification, those are items one and four. For clarification, Sven, those are items one and four?
I apologize. Yes, in the resolution, and I'm just trying to keep focused on going down through. I think those are two very important ones. So I propose that we go to May eighth from the current April fifteenth.
Sven, you're talking about the ordinance, aren't you?
Yes. That was Martha asking the question. Any discussion?
Not on those items.
That's kind of a given, isn't it? We have to stay within, we can't be less restricted than the state.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to move us along in the resolution.
Right, so making a motion.
Oh, I make a motion that we move the date. Let me read it. The entire ordinance as amended shall continue in full force and effect until midnight on May eighth, 2020, which is a revision from April fifteenth. And the second one I make a motion on is that
One, is this, wait, are you doing? That's, that's, is that one motion or you want to have, do you want to have two more? I mean, this is one motion. Do you want to add to it?
All right, I make that motion.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Martha seconded it. Thank you, Martha. Discussion? Andre Bujol, I think.
No, no discussion at this time.
All right, Martha, do you have anything you want to add to it?
No, this is just extending to May eighth, right?
That's correct.
No, nothing to add.
Chris Willie? Chris, you're muted.
Nothing to add regarding the date.
Okay. All right, I made a motion on the table made by Sven to move the effective date of the ordinance up to May eighth, 2020. Martha seconded it. No further discussion. I'll call the roll. Andre?
Aye.
Chris, Willie?
Aye.
Sven Rissom?
Aye.
Martha Ball?
Aye.
I vote affirmative. Motion carries. Sven, do you have another motion in mind?
Second motion I'd like to make is to move again, point four. All activities on the island which brings together more, brings together more than five, five people versus ten that's current. So in line with the state going to five people.
What's the complete motion?
I make a motion to edit the current ordinance in bullet four. All gatherings of people other than family members in excess of five or more on Block Island are prohibited. First sentence and then the last sentence to follow in that same paragraph.
Thank you. We have a motion on the table. Do I have a second?
Second.
Chris, Chris, second by Chris. Any discussion? Martha, do you have anything for us?
No, I do not.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor, I'm sorry, Martha?
Let me go first, aye.
Thank you, Martha. Andre?
Aye.
Chris, Willie?
Aye.
Ben Rissom?
Aye.
I vote affirmative. Unanimous vote. Thank you. Who do you like to take up next? Andre Bujol?
Well, the next change we have was in number nine. So you want to go through that, the change to that? You want me to read it or?
Oh, yeah, if you want to, we just, just be advised the, in the middle of the, in the middle of the second page of it, on page five, in the middle of it, there's that one shouldn't be in there, starting with workers in mainland, ending in mainland.
Bullet number two?
Three, right?
Three.
It's three. Okay, so that not should be, all right. So for the public, I'm going to read what it was. So it did say visitors who are not involved in essential activities, as the term is hereafter defined, shall leave the island and follow CDC and Rhode Island Department of Health Guidelines. Anyone arriving on Block Island must immediately self-quarantine, as the term is hereafter defined for two weeks, and therefore thereafter must shelter in place. And that term is hereafter, hereafter defined, and follow CDC and Rhode Island Department of Health Guidelines. What has been added to that paragraph?
Point word proposed, what is proposed?
Proposed?
It hasn't been added. You're proposing, it's a proposal, not an addition. Go ahead.
Yeah. The proposed addition would be nothing contained in this paragraph shall be construed so as to prevent a person who is under the self-quarantine or shelter in place requirements of this paragraph shall leave the island. Then goes on, all residents
Leaving the island, sorry.
All residents full-time or seasonal must shelter in place and follow CDC and Rhode Island Department of Health Guidelines. Only transient workers may commute to Block Island who are engaged in essential activities. There's a proposed addition to this that it goes on to say, the proposed addition is provided however that all such transient workers are restricted as follows. And these are just, these are the proposals right now in the, right now. Workers must inform, you know, that's the left blank prior to coming to the island. Workers may not go to a location on the island, other than that to the job site where they will engage in an essential activity and back to the ferry and/or airport to leave the island. Workers must wear face masks and have washing and/or hand sanitizer readily available to them. Workers must maintain a daily log of personal contacts and workers must maintain social distancing and the CDC and Rhode Island Department of Health Guidelines must be followed.
Did you skip something?
Martha Ball? Yes.
The third point?
The third bullet. We've eliminated.
Well, apparently I've been told the third bullet wasn't supposed to be there, which I can read the third bullet because
Just in what I had, I didn't know what was going on.
Right.
When did that get, when was that eliminated?
The discussion was had that it was, it was, it was not appropriate in terms of it basically made it such that transient workers would be enabled.
No, I understand. I just want to know what's taken out.
Right.
Andre, do you want to finish the paragraph nine? It's on the second page. Hang on one second. Does that just end there? It's the whole, it's the whole page.
It does, oh, yeah, okay.
All right. All persons on Block Island are encouraged to conduct essential activities by themselves in order, in order that minimal contact exposure be achieved. The term essential activities includes activities relating to the following public safety. The following: public safety, public works, medical care. What has been added, a proposed addition, is emergency and/or scheduled veterinary care. What is, what was in there is not being discussed, I mean, is not being proposed as public utilities such as water, sewer, electric, sale and purchase of gasoline, sale and purchase of propane and heating oil, delivery of medicines, transfer station, sale and purchase of liquor as provided in the emergency ordinance, sale and purchase of hardware and lumber, post office package delivery, sale and purchase of groceries, sale and purchase of takeout food. And there's a new addition in here that's proposed to end, that would be after takeout food that says from establishments that were serving takeout food as of April eleventh, 2020. Another thing that was in there was banking, education as it directly relates to the development of curriculum and its distribution. And it goes on to another proposal to add farming and agriculture, commercial fishing, lobstering and shellfishing, emergency appliance repair, emergency telecommunications network repair, emergency exterminator services, emergency heating and cooling and insulation and emergency vehicles, which was already there.
Emergency vehicle repairs, right?
Yeah, which was already there. Are we considering the rest of this nine? Or we just want to stop there and discuss that?
Stop.
We can stop and discuss it there.
Yeah, it's a good idea. Because for the public, the rest of this moves on to describe self-quarantine and what that means.
We can come back to that.
Yep, we got enough on our plate right here.
All right. Any discussion? Sven Rissom?
I know it's hard for anybody who just had the sheets in front of them, but in that paragraph of defining essential activities that Andre read, thanks Andre, there was a statement around takeout food. And I would like to discuss that. It says from establishments that were serving takeout food as of eleven, April eleventh, 2020. That was a proposed addition. I, I am not in favor of that proposed addition and support takeout food and all of the distancing in order to support our local businesses. I don't think it endangers anybody. So I'm not in support of that addition. I'm also not in support of installation of heating and cooling. I'm comfortable with saying emergency heating and cooling repair, but not and installation. So those two points I would like to strike, not strike from proposed.
Any discussion?
I have a question.
Chris Willie?
How do you strike installation if it's an emergency? Someone loses their heating ability to heat water, you need to install a new heater.
Yeah, if that's the way it's defined, then that's, thank you, Chris. You're right. I was thinking about installing something new, but you're right. If it's, I would draw that. You're right.
Yeah, because I think, I think it ties in, good point, Chris. It ties in as emergency installation.
Thank you.
Andre Bujol?
I think, you know, we've been pretty broad on some of this stuff and expected a lot of people to understand things and everyone's done quite a good job, but in order to make, I think we need to be a little clearer then if we want to do that. And I think we should maybe put emergency before installation.
That's fine.
Agree.
And then I have a comment about the April eleventh.
Chris Willie?
If I, if memory serves me correct, the reason that was added in there is because we've encountered a number of questions about because food and restaurants are deemed essential, that that means that they can open up. And I think that's why that, that clause April eleventh was inserted because let's just face it, everybody out here that has a hotel, or the majority of them have a restaurant attached to the facility. So is, and Kathy, is that why we, that April eleventh clause was added because of the feedback that you got regarding that example?
Yeah. Yes, you're absolutely correct. The reason that was added was because there was a concern that because takeout was added, that people having restaurants, restaurants and hotels were making the argument that since that was essential activity, they could bring whomever they wanted over to the island, do whatever they deem necessary in order to open up the takeout portion. And there was a concern that that was a loophole that could bring people to the island in a manner that really was never intended. So I was asked to somehow address that loophole, and that's why I inserted that date.
Thank you. That's why I wanted that clarified.
Thank you, Counselor. Other questions or comments? Martha, do you have anything?
No, I, that clarification addresses a lot of my concerns from the previous meeting.
Okay, good. Andre Bujol?
Just at the beginning of nine, Kathy, a lot of those, the red print, you know, everything that's redlined. Those are just for essential activity people, right?
Correct. So, I'm sorry.
No.
One at a time.
Hi, Kathy.
Some of the red was addressed in the meeting, and some of these items were added from communications to me from council members subsequent to the meeting. So I wanted to put them all in there so that the council would see everything that has been suggested, and you could make a determination what you wanted to add to keep, delete, et cetera. Okay, I've got a question.
Martha?
The very first one. Nothing contained in this paragraph shall be construed as to prevent a person who is under self-quarantine or shelter in place from leaving the island. My only concern with that is that it opens it up for people coming over overnight or for a couple of days. It feels like if people are going to come over here legitimately for a week or two weeks or something, but I, I I'm more concerned about this. The way this reads, it seems like you can come over for the day.
Sorry, could I speak to that? I was asked to address the situation that some people coming over, they had sold their house. They were only going to be here for a couple of days to pack up, and they didn't, did not, we needed a clarification as to whether or not they had to stay for fourteen days before they could go back. So that's where that comes from.
Is there any way of tightening that? So it's, it's for, I don't know, something that's pre-arranged or pre-scheduled or, or something? Because I just see this as a huge hole.
Chris Willie?
I don't see it in, I'm trying to look for it in here, but I think previous, we also said that caretaking and house washing wasn't deemed as essential. So if you're leaving a property owner in a position where the people they pay to check on homes isn't allowed to do that, they should have the right to come check on their home. So for instance, today we have sixty mile an hour winds. If a property owner wants to check on their house because the paid person isn't allowed to, then how do you prevent that from, actually legally prevent that from happening? I thought this kind of stemmed from our, our definition of of not allowing, or in our ordinance, not allowing caretakers to actually do that. So you have to leave it up to the property owner to do that.
Sven Rissom?
Chris, I'm with you. If you were to change the word person to homeowner, so it would read nothing contained in this paragraph shall be construed as to prevent a homeowner who was under self-quarantine or shelter in place requirements of this paragraph from leaving the island. I think that addresses it, I think. Martha, others?
Okay, why, why isn't, I guess I got confused on that one. Why isn't house watch essential? That seems far more to the point than having somebody having to come over here.
Can we stick with this one for a second?
Well, they, they wrap together.
Yeah, but we are discussing essential personnel later on, aren't we? I don't know.
I think, I think Martha, the idea was, the thought was that number one, we're not in a situation where we're having freeze-ups or fear of it. And number two, the idea of house watchers going into numerous houses, and if they actually go into the house and check the house and walk around and touch things and that sort of thing might be a vehicle for transmission of potential disease.
They can check the, today is a good example. People can check the exterior of the house.
They can certainly do that now just by driving around, you're right. If they want to go for a ride. As long as they're not self-quarantined. Chris Willie?
I like Sven's suggestion. Just make it specific to homeowner.
Thank you, Chris. Sven, I'm sorry. Andre Bujol?
Kathy, you want to weigh in on that? Change to homeowner? Do you think that I, just in, with respect to, does it, does it, does it clarify it more?
Well, yes, it definitely limits it more.
The other thing though, let's remember, the other thing though too is if someone's out here for whatever reason, if they came out here for whatever reason legally in terms of the ordinance, and they want to leave, even if they're not a homeowner, we shouldn't try to not let them leave.
I agree.
Ken?
Yeah, Jim, Jim Kern?
I think Ken, I think Ken's right, and I think the, probably the smartest way to approach this is if you come over, because there are circumstances we're not thinking of, including people who reside in houses that don't own them for whatever reason. As long as you essentially, and we discussed this in the last meeting, as long as you quarantine while you're on Block Island and you return directly to the mode of transportation and leave, as Ken says, I don't think you want to keep people here needlessly, and I don't know that that presents a different level of risk or threat as long as the quarantine is taken seriously.
Right. Questions? Martha, go ahead.
The other thing you need to remember is we're talking about homeowners, as if they, most places are in shelter in place, other states, they shouldn't be leaving the state they're in. And we have homeowners out, or people who own houses out here who live on the West Coast. They're not going to be flying back here to check on their house.
Yep. Andre?
I want to move on to the next, the next, the first item, but I want to make sure that this is discussed enough and everyone's happy with it. Yeah. Martha?
Well, do we, do we say that to prevent a homeowner, a person or a homeowner, or do we say just homeowner?
I'm comfortable with homeowner. I think it clarifies that. To Jim's comment, I think that somebody, of course, could leave if they need to, especially like if they're sick or something. But I think that just clarifies and tries to tighten it up.
Okay. All right. So Catherine, it looks like we're sticking with, instead of a person, we're sticking with the word homeowner. Yeah, Chris Willie?
I think in consideration of that, we just have to remember when we get down a little further to essential to address caretaker and and, and, and property watch, whatever you want to call it, property management.
Okay.
Because that's kind of one of the reasons why this issue came up is that was prevented. So we don't want to exacerbate it further by continuing to prevent caretakers from doing that. Otherwise, you're basically making the homeowner come out.
Right, okay.
So just a consideration.
Molly, do you have comments?
I have some comments from the public if you're ready for them.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. This is from the Hill family. They say, I have a question regarding the emergency ordinance nine for the town council. My question relates to the definition of anyone arriving. Is anyone inclusive? Inclusive of full-time residents that travel off island for essential purposes? If it does not apply in that case, would that mean that if someone new arrives on the island and then self-quarantines for two weeks, they could then travel off island for essential purposes without again going through self-quarantine? And the answer to that, for clarification, is no. In other words, for all those of us who have been here for over a month and who have followed the proper procedures as confirmed by the local police, are we eligible to travel off island for essential purposes? For example, medical care, without having to go through self-quarantine and return? If we are not eligible for that same treatment, how long would the town council require us to be here before we can travel off island for essential purposes without a fourteen-day self-quarantine? And I think if one person's asking this question, then it may not be clear. And I think if one person's asking this question, then it may not be clear to everyone that the virus is on the other side, so when you leave and return, you have a 14-day quarantine. Unless someone disagrees with my interpretation of that.
I'm not sure if that, is that the case, because it didn't sound like that last time.
They're saying they've come to the island and they've gone through their 14-day quarantine. They want to go off island to do something essential and come back.
Right. Sven Risen.
My example is my wife who broke her ankle, had to go to the doctor, she is now self-quarantined in our house and in a separate part of the house, and I think everybody should do that. The issue is how to quarantine for those that are coming from the mainland, however hard that is and the hardship it creates.
Okay. May I continue with some more comments?
As long as they're pertinent to what we're discussing, yep.
Um, Gal Hall asks, is a, a moving van, uh, going to and from the island related directly to sale of real estate same day, directly to property and back considered essential? That's her comment, she has a follow-up that says, um, for a house watch, doors blow open and can cause considerable damage. House watch has to be able to go. And she has another follow-up, what if the owner lives in California and their doors blow open? We cannot go close them? And a third follow-up from Gal is, if they do not allow house watch to house watch, they are instilling the idea that the owners would have to come. If we had a house watch, if we had a house we watched, but the living room doors blew open, are we supposed to call the owners and have them fly out here to close their doors?
Oh yeah, that's exactly what we're going to have happen. I'm sorry, no. Discussion, this is going to come up later in the discussion in terms of house watchers, let's try and stand point in this part, this section of it. We'll, we'll handle, we'll discuss that later. Did anyone have any comments about the earlier question she had though?
If you come here, you're here for 14 days.
Martha.
My question was, so, so if you come here, you're here for 14 days?
If you come here for 14 days, you're here for 14 days and you're quarantining.
I mean, if you come here, if you come, if you come to the island, you quarantine for 14 days.
If you're here for, if you're here for 14 days, you do, yeah. If you're here for two days, you quarantine for two days and then you leave.
Well, that's the clarification I think we're looking for.
Okay.
Well, I think, I think it's not clear to the people.
Sorry, it's fucking, it's fucking.
Bye Molly.
Thank you. Not clear to one person writing the letter, it may not be clear to the people listening in.
Yep. Andre.
I don't know, you know, the, as I, as we, uh, we went through this and, uh, a two-week quarantine, I get it, that's why I said earlier, we obviously have to spell things out, but if you're going to go to the mainland, you're going to come here and you're going to stay here for an extended amount of time and you've quarantined for two weeks and you jump on the ferry, it, within 14 days, yeah, you gotta self-quarantine when you come back. Like, you don't just do two weeks, it's not like a, uh, like a, uh, like a vaccine or something like that. I mean, you just, I don't know, I mean, maybe we need to spell all that out, I, and maybe it's time we do that.
Well, I don't think that was the question, the question was, can you come for five days?
I don't, all right, we need to spell it out. So obviously, we do need to spell this out. Kathy, can you put something in there where if you're coming to Block Island for longer than two weeks, you need to quarantine for two weeks? If you're coming here to do other stuff, then, and you're not going to be here for two weeks, then you need to essentially quarantine for the amount of time you're here until the time you get off the ferry. That means no post office, that means no going to the store, that means no going anywhere except to where you need to go. I, we can put it in the ordinance if we need to, and obviously we need to, so Kathy, I would request you put that in our ordinance.
Sven Risen.
I a hundred percent support what Andre just said, clarity and focus.
Thank you. Uh, Catherine, did you pick up on that? Kathy Merola, are you there? Kathy?
But we lost the mainland person?
Uh, we may have. No, she's still on, wait a minute. Kathy Merola? All right, let's, let's hold up for a minute. You lost power.
She has no power? All right, well, may I, Ken?
Let me see. Let me see if I get ahold of her, I guess, or, or Molly, would you please try to get ahold of her?
Yes.
Thank you. Andre, go ahead.
Uh, just if we've lost Kathy through power, a power issue at her place, then Molly, will you make a note of things that we, you know, need her to clarify on?
But, but she should be able to call in by cell phone.
Yeah, we'll give it a minute. Let's pause for a minute.
Molly, Molly, do you have some, uh, Molly, would you like to read to us?
I just asked her to call Kathy. She's, okay, she's gonna, she's gonna call in on the, on the other phone over here so she can take part in the meeting. Standby. Molly's trying to facilitate Catherine calling in on another phone.
Yeah.
Yep.
I could hear some of what. I lost power in my landline, I'm on a cell, we have very bad weather here, I'm not sure how much you're going to be able to hear, sometimes the cell isn't good in this weather, but I can hear you now.
It's loud and clear right now, wherever you are, don't move.
Can Andre, uh, reread Kathy so you can make sure you capture this?
Yes.
Uh, well Kathy, did you hear what, did you hear what, the discussion, you said you could hear it or no?
No, I, I lost power in my landline in the middle of the discussion.
Okay, well, bottom line is, I think, you know, we need to be more clear on some of these, um, uh, some of the things in the ordinance. So under self-quarantine or, uh, yeah, self-quarantine or anywhere where you see fit, can you make sure it's, it's clear that, um, you know, people who come here longer than three weeks need to self-quarantine for two weeks, uh, people who are coming here for whatever reason that are not going to plan on being here for two, for two weeks, that they essentially need to self-quarantine for the amount of time that they're, they're going to be here, which should be abundantly clear, there's no stops, there's no post office, there's no store, there's no, wherever else they think they might be wanting to go, there is absolutely no stops in between point A from point B for the amount of time that they will be here.
So you're gonna have to go right to the ferry or the airport from your house?
From, yeah, exactly, what house, wherever, yeah.
To and from.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. What, Sven?
I said to and from, I think, so Andre, I think that takes care of that point?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, well, I don't know, I mean.
Well, I think it does.
It does, it does.
Yeah, there's a lot of question on that.
I, just going down the list, again, trying to get things checked here, on bullet number one, workers must inform a blank prior to coming to the island. I don't want to, my recommendation would be dispatch because they're, they're available, they're on the phone and they can keep log, but I sure don't want to overload dispatch, so if anybody's got a recommendation, I just want to fill in the blank.
Like Jim, Jim Kern, do you have a recommendation on that at this time?
A couple, couple different places I see this happening, one is the land use coordinator who has volunteered to, to keep a database of those who would be working on the island if that was, uh, allowed, and then dispatch was the other one. So I think for the purposes of the ordinance, I would put the town of New Shoreham and we'll put out, um, information as to where you need to, um, to contact. The other way you could say it is the town of New Shoreham through the dispatch. We, we also may want some flexibility as to where, uh, this information is brought in and, uh, collected, given the experience as, as time goes on. So, um, kind of up to Kathy, if it's okay to put town of New Shoreham in there, might leave it at that, if you guys feel more comfortable, uh, being specific, I would say the town of New Shoreham and then through dispatch.
And, and then can we please put the number? I know it's, I know it sounds silly, it's a resolution, but to Andre's point earlier, let's be crystal clear and avoid as much confusion as possible.
Well, wherever the resolution, wherever the resolution's posted, you can have an addendum and show what the information is.
Yeah, I'm just saying, so we just put the phone number in there too.
But what if it changed?
Uh, Ken?
Yeah, go ahead Martha.
Uh, yeah, I was, I was just going to say, why don't we just have the designated of the town of Shoreham and the phone number, as you said, at, at addendum, because it's going to have to be at the dock and at the plane, both. People aren't going to go through the whole ordinance to find it.
All right, Catherine, Catherine, do you have a recommendation?
The other, the other option is to, um, allow the town manager to determine the location and to indicate that it's posted on the town's website.
Which, which is, which is what I, what I would do, I would list, for the purposes of the ordinance, I would list, um, uh, contact the designee of, of the town manager or, uh, leave it general and, and contact the town of New Shoreham. Comfortable with either one of those.
Any other discussion?
I think we have to have a designate.
Go ahead.
I think, I think we should decide here and now.
Go ahead.
Person to go to, because it's, it's going to become another one of those, um, you know, quarantining for two weeks things. Uh, I've tried to register, but I didn't know where, I couldn't find it, um, I think we should decide right now where that should land. I'm happy with land use because, uh, that's, that's the building official and, uh, I don't, that's my opinion right now at the top of my.
Jim?
One, one, one more time, I think we run the risk of identifying this at the policy level instead of the operational level, and then you need to change it, and then in order to change it, you have to go back to the, to the policymaking body, which is the town council. I would put a, a general line in an ordinance and then we can identify, excuse me, the, um, the place we want it to be contacted, because it may be land use and then, um, at some period early on in the process, we decide that's not, that's not feasible and we need to have two places or we need to have three places. So I think we want to stay general at the policy level and more specific at the operative, at the operative level.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree.
All right.
To clarify, Ken, then, or Jim, the words will be in that blank designate of the town manager? Or what are the words, Kathy?
That's what I would put.
Do you want to indicate that, uh, the designate is listed on the website?
Yes.
Next subject?
I think it'd be, it'd be indicated on the website and wherever, and, and wherever other town, town in, information is posted. So if, if, if it can be a little bit broader than that, just so we get it out there just as many ways as possible. Where's the discussion? Anybody?
Uh, no, I just, Molly, do you have any, any emails for us to read now?
I have two emails about restaurants, if you're ready to hear them.
Yeah.
Darren Vest, and these both pertain to the April 11th cutoff. Darren Vest says, the April 11th takeout restriction means additional people on the island cannot open for takeout food sale. Please confirm that if you are doing the work to prepare to open yourself and operate yourself or are using local island-based labor, that you cannot open for takeout only. And the second one on that same topic is from the folks at Club Soda, they say, we were open until the shutdown, so I'm assuming we're all set.
Anybody want to answer that? Or discuss the comments?
Well, we have to draw a line in the sand, I'm afraid. Um, I, Soda was open, but I think the whole point, I thought, I understood the whole point of this date was to get us out of that terrible can of worms that, um, was being opened by hotels in particular with their, um, uh, small, you know, their, their takeout, it was such, such, maybe such a small part, a tiny part of their business, and is Club Soda open, doing takeout now?
It just opened. Today.
Oh, well, they're, oh.
Chris Willie?
I think there's, there's two questions here, Club Soda was open, their restaurant and their bar was open until the shutdown, they're not getting open, as I understand it. And then the other question was about an island restaurant or a, a facility getting opened, opening up, that's, that, that wasn't open prior to the shutdown. So there's two different scenarios here.
Right.
And the intent, um, as, as Kathy explained earlier, um, was to curb the opening of more restaurants and more workers, either, I, I, I didn't differentiate between whether they were local or, or, or not, but that was part of the issue at hand with, with the number of questions that we got from establishments that asked to be, uh, asked for the ability to open up in which for some involved bringing off island trades over, so that's, that was the, uh, April 11th clause, and I think these are two different questions, um, personally. Meaning Club Soda wasn't closed all winter long, where the other establishment sounds like it was, so.
Sven Risen?
Um, Chris, I, and, and to everybody's comments, what about if we change the wording from establishments that were serving, uh, sorry, let me back up here a minute, uh, the term essential activities includes activities relating to, um, sale and purchase of takeout food from establishments that were serving takeout food as of April 11th? How about if we say sale and purchase of takeout food from establishments? How about if we say sale and purchase of takeout food from establishments that were, that were opened prior to April 11th or, or prior to the March enactment of the ordinance? What I'm trying to do is to acknowledge those that were open in the winter, shut down, figured out now how to, how to do it and are opening now. So for example, just to further this, a, a bar restaurant was serving takeout, stopped serving takeout. If they now wanted to start back again, are they in or out? So I think if we can say prior to the March 23rd or whatever the exact date is, if they were serving food and/or beverages, then that would account for the ability to do takeout. Does that, clarify that, Chris?
Uh, it clarifies it.
It's too broad.
I did up.
You know, it has to be, if you say prior to, you could carry that back to the year previous. You've just got to have immediately prior to or the week prior to, or something that's much more definitive.
We could just say from January 1, April 11.
What's?
That, I like the, what Kathy just said. I mean, the dates help, you know, getting away from words like prior or things like that, that can be gray. The clearer it is, the better, in my mind.
Any discussion? Andre Boudreaux?
Can you just read it back to me the way we're gonna leave it?
Somebody have it?
This Kathy, basically what I'm going to say, and I'll put it in a little more actual form, is it's going to be from establishments that were serving takeout food anytime during the period, January 1 through April 11.
Uh, okay. I just want to make sure that, I mean, another establishment opened and in town. So I just want to make sure that we're not closing anybody.
Okay.
Uh, Ken?
Martha?
Has everybody been, the people who are normally open, were they, did poor people, not poor people, old people, oh, you know what I'm trying to say, Old Island, did they close? I don't know.
Yeah, they did. Sven?
But continuing, Martha, they would fall into the definition that Kathy just read. Kathy, I wonder if we want to say January 2nd? The only reason is that we avoid New Year's or maybe say February 1st, just getting away from those that were open New Year's.
Whatever your preference is.
Yeah, that's probably a good point.
I prefer January 2 or pick a date.
Okay. Discussion? Do you want to deal with that portion or do you want to move on to the next section?
Is this, oh, sorry, is this, and is this where we should have a discussion around caretakers in this paragraph?
Uh, no, it's gonna be under work activities, shouldn't it?
That wasn't the question.
What?
Want to make sure we don't miss the point that was raised earlier?
I think the only que-
Yeah, I guess.
The only que-
Go ahead.
Martha?
It wasn't the only question, if you wanted to deal with this and move on right now?
Yeah, I think we can move on. I think that's been dealt with. Do we, the date, 2nd through the 11th? Are we set on that? Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Ken?
Yes?
I just want to make the comment, anyone trying to email me, I'm not ignoring you, I have no internet.
Okay, thank you, Catherine.
Is the broadcast from the paper still going?
Uh, nope, it looks like it's gone blank.
This is Peter, I lost mine also.
Let me check. Now I've lost that feed for some reason. Um, Laura, if you're out there, come back and try and set it back up again. We seem to be losing things. We want to, do we want to pause or what do you want to do? Peter, Kim?
Ken?
Yeah, Pete?
I had dropped off, I had dropped off and tried to pick it up again. It was up for just a couple of seconds and then dumped right out again.
Okay.
So as of right, it's off again.
Yeah, I see it. The screen is blank here.
And the YouTube is still working from the, from the town's website.
Okay. Over the last, we've lost a feed for Black Island Times.
I asked him to come back.
Okay, thank you.
People can still call into Zoom, is that not right, one of the administrators or?
Yes, they can call into Zoom or they can, or they can go to the, the feed for the, this meeting on YouTube.
Michelle, just for everybody that could possibly still be listening, can you just repeat the number to call into Zoom for those folks, just in case they got tossed from Facebook?
Yes.
I go, I go. Want to do it?
Michelle, can you give me that again, please?
Yes, it is 929-205, I'm sorry, that, yes, 205-6099.
Thank you.
Uh, Dr. Clark has just noted that he had to jump off for an emergency house call.
Okay, thank you. Do, did they need the password also?
Not to listen.
The meeting ID. The meeting ID is 992-9029-8872. And the password is 005276. These are on the agenda posted on Clerkbase and the Secretary of State's website as well. And if you go to the New Shoreham website, new-shoreham.com, the first news article has the link to the live stream on YouTube.
Thank you, Michelle.
You're welcome.
Ken?
Yes, Martha.
Uh, Karikrud is like, is coming over.
Okay.
Molly, do you have anything to read to us while waiting or?
Um, you're pretty much up to date. Just people, um, one comment, someone wanted you to be sure to identify the page number in the section that you were talking about. As you spoke about them. And another message from Darren Vest who says, "Isn't the issue bringing in off-island labor? We are not doing that and we have a small shop, not a hotel. What's the purpose, what's the purpose of the date restriction if not off-island labor?" And a message from Christine Greeley who says, "Are we allowing restaurants to open using new workers from off-island and in crews as large as they would like?"
Any comments or questions?
This is Michelle. I'd like to say that several people have jumped on to the YouTube stream. They may have been ones that were dropped by the Black Island Times.
Okay.
Maybe one of them is the Black Island.
All right. Uh, does anyone want to answer your address to questions that were raised?
Molly, did you send that email, forward that email out from Christine?
I will.
Thanks.
I have it.
Andre?
And I, I have that.
Uh, Sven Risen? Oh, okay, sorry, 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 your hand up. All right. Well, the question, I guess the question that was raised was about the number of persons were anticipating being allowed to work at the, if a, if a, um, restaurant, let's say they were open for that period of time and they're going to be opening back up for takeout only. I guess that's the nature of the question. So I mean, at this point, to my knowledge, we haven't limited the number of people working in the restaurants that are open at this time. So, but how many people do you need to do takeout food on a limited basis? Chris Willie?
I don't think that's, uh, I think the five-person rule is in effect regardless, isn't it?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sven Risen? And in addition to that, the six-foot distancing rule and all the CDC and RIDOH guidelines. And I think, I think that spells it out pretty clearly.
Ken?
Go ahead, Jim. He stepped away, Jim. He's, uh.
Andre, I, what, what I heard from that email, and I'm not advocating one thing or another, but I think it's important because if we get to the point where this is the policy, we need to be able to, uh, apply it. I think what that person was saying is, if the, if the real objective is to keep to a minimum travel from off the island and, and this person is a small shop with, I think, as he or she said it, local people, what would preclude them from opening for takeout. Just sitting here right now, I'm thinking even food trucks, and maybe they're exempted in a different way, but even a small, a small operation like that, that hasn't opened yet, that's all, that's all local people. I think it's a difficult, uh, difficult thing to kind of try to distinguish one from another. But that's what I thought he was, that's what I thought he or she was, was getting at.
Okay, um, Ken, you're back? Are we back online, Ken? Your microphone's off. The microphone's off, Ken.
It is?
Go ahead. Yep, now it's back on.
Thank you. We're trying to get it going here.
All right, Sven, did you have something to say about that?
Nope.
All right.
All right, we're apparently back on with the Black Island Times. So. Go ahead, Andre.
Uh, there was, Jim was talking about the, um, you know, if a local restaurant owner was coming, you know, was here quarantined, whatnot, uh, want to get going to open their restaurant. Uh, and the original intent was to stop, you know, this whole workers from coming off, from off-island, you know, how would that mesh? Are you gonna, basically are we stopping the locals from opening their restaurants? And, um, I think that was what the question was.
For takeout.
Yeah, takeout or?
Takeout, right, at this time, yeah.
Ken?
Anyone? Yeah, go ahead, Chris.
Uh, I think Jim also mentioned, you know, differentiating between the two and who's gonna do that. I mean, the way it reads right now, as I understand it, every place that's been open as of January 2nd, serving food can be open. So that includes Kimberly's, Old Island Pub, The Barn, Club Soda, Eli's. Maybe I'm missing somebody. And as far as I know, all those individuals weren't serving takeout since the shutdown. But they would be allowed to moving forward. And anybody that has not been opened after January 2nd should not be opening moving forward until the ordinance changes. Is that correct?
Kathy Monroe?
That's what my notes indicate from this discussion.
Uh, Sven Risen?
And, and that is up until we want to revise this or create an addendum. So it may change, I'm sure it'll change. Uh, but at least that is the case as Chris read it through, right now, May 8. So we're, I, just to clarify, it's, it's a three-week discussion and that may change later.
And somebody's already mentioned this, but I think it's really, we can't stress enough this minimum gathering number.
Right.
With five, five, is it now, five or six?
Five.
Five, thank you.
Yeah. Further discussion? Where do you want to go next?
B.
Sven, your hands up.
Go ahead.
Oh, sorry, I didn't know it was up, sorry. Um, Paige, I'd like to go next, assuming we've taken care of essential activities, which I believe we have, if caretaker is coming up in the next section, then I'd love to go to on page 5 to 9B, work activities.
Well, I guess I'm, I, I guess.
Where are we?
Martha, go ahead.
No, you said, where are we? That was all.
Oh, well, we're deciding whether to start on page 6.
Or would you rather, Ken, that we make the motion and clarify up until halfway through page 5?
I guess, I guess. I guess if we need to, need to determine or clarify that the caretaker or house watcher, whatever you want to call it, I guess we need to get the proper terminology. If that is going to be, that is something that may, may need to be clarified sooner than later. If, if we're talking about an ordinance, the ordinance that's going to stay in existence for three weeks.
And if I can speak, I would, I, as I mentioned before, I would put house watcher in essential activities. I think that's simple.
Discussion?
I mean, house watcher should be in there, I think.
Uh, Chris Willie?
I think they-
Martha?
No, we are, we are, have, isn't, um, I mean, I mean, I happen to have a reading, two things, doing two things at once here. We have the maintain social distancing in CDC and DOH guidelines and wouldn't that apply to them?
Yeah, it would. Good, yes. Andre, you have something?
Just that if we add to, if we add to essential activity, essential personnel, we're granting them the permission to go off-island and come back as they please and not quarantine. So I, I'm fine with putting them somewhere because I think they need to go in. But, um, you said, adding more to the essentials, like adds more people that can travel freely from the mainland. And quite frankly, I, I think it's going to start getting abused and, uh, from the mainland. And quite frankly, I, I think it's going to start getting abused and, and come back and like a doctor or a nurse or somebody like that is definitely an essential person. I mean, but I, I, I really, I recognize the need to put house watchers somewhere to be able to go check on houses too. Because I recognize the need for that. I just do, you know, granting that essential activity, essential personnel status, I'm not sure either.
Right. Well, the example that was given, if a house, if a door blows open, do we have to have somebody fly in from California to close it? I think was a little extreme. And as we've said, people can, and as long as they're not self-quarantined, people who live here and who do house watching can drive around and observe the house from the outside. Essentially, they can walk around the outside of the house and make sure everything looks intact. But, you know, they're, they're not violating anything by doing that as long as they're not quarantined.
Can we just say, I mean, I know nobody wants to talk about resident, but I, isn't, aren't they by their very nature, most of the house watchers, local?
We can make that assumption, I guess.
This would allow, under essential activities, it allows people to get on that ferry and go over there for the afternoon and not have to, you know what I'm saying? It's, it's almost like a, an enhanced commuter pass.
Yeah, I see your point. I see your point.
But who does that?
I don't know, but I don't know anybody who does it now, but they could, is what I'm saying.
Well, there's no point in having a house watch guy if he's in a person, if they're in near against it. Say existing or current or on island or something.
You're missing what I'm saying. We're adding.
No, I know exactly what you're saying. My point was, if you don't have that, the folks who own the houses are going to have to come over. And that's, that's what we're trying to not have.
Sven Riesen?
I hear and, and agree with Andre. Can we, can we hold off on house watcher for a little bit depending on what happens with nine B? And, and either it should be a nine B, which is work activities, or we put it in essential. Understanding, and Andre hit on a really good unintended consequence, but, but it should be somewhere. And so let's not get too hung up until we get through nine B and figure out details and if that's even going to pass. And then figure out where house watch comes. Can we do that, Ken?
Yeah, as long as we make sure we come back to it. Chris Willie?
Yeah, I, I think I, I sent the concern Andre just brought up about the term essential. And, you know, when you're christened essential, that gives you a, a set of privileges and I think, and that's what I'm going to call it. And that's, that's an unintended consequence, but it's a consequence and I, and I don't know how to address it. I think Kathy did the best job she could as far as labeling a lot of this emergency. But when you get to restaurants again, as listed as an essential activity, you know, it's not an emergency activity, but that's still listed as essential. And, you know, the question obvious, it begs to ask, same thing with a lot of these that don't have emergency in front of it. Does that mean you don't have to abide by any of the, you know, you can go to the mainland and come back and because you're essential, you don't need to quarantine and, and, you know, again, it, it's, I don't want to lose the forest through the trees here. It's just, we're asking people to do the right thing. And a lot of people, a lot of their questions are, are about that. They want to do the right thing and, and when the term essential is used, it just clouds it all up. And I, unfortunately, I don't have a solution to it, but it, it does if, to Andre's point.
Well, maybe Kathy. Who's speaking? Is that Martha?
It's Martha. And I mean, I think if people who are living in far away had any, I, I think they all think their house watchers are here.
Yep. Catherine, did you just some input?
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking about it. I'm thinking of maybe you could include it as essential activity, but limit it to house watchers who were previously engaged to a residence of the island and are here, you know, they've already gone through the quarantine, they're only under shelter in place.
Right. Okay. For some reason, Michelle, my mic is staying keyed, it looks like. Anyone have any comments or questions?
We're not going to be able to identify every single scenario. So after we discuss this and move to approve all of it or parts of it, I think the, the date of, of, of this going into effect has to be taken seriously because all the scenarios are going to need to be worked out before it does get, it does be, you know, become part of the ordinance, specific to these sections that we're talking about right now, not the, not the date of going to May 8th for the rest of it, but all these specific circumstances that we're trying to cover, again, this whole ordinance was put in place to minimize the movement of people and things to the island and from the island and back to the island. But at the same time, we're trying to balance a lot of things that have come up in the past couple of weeks. So we're going to need time, whatever language is approved, I think it's going to need a little bit of time to flush out some of the what ifs before it actually goes into effect. And that's my only comment.
All right. Why don't we, why don't we move on then? Starting on top of page six, I guess. There's a definition and the new proposed wording includes in the term shelter in place means remaining at, remaining at your residence except for activities related to essential activities. However, people may leave their residences to conduct the following activities regardless, regardless of whether they are essential activities. And then it has, the first item is both, is A, outside activities. And the proposed, or proposed wording is people may engage in outside activities such as walks, exercise, but social distancing must be maintained and the CDC Rhode Island Department of Health guidelines must be followed. Any questions or comments on that? The second paragraph is a little more complicated. Andre, you want to read that?
Sure can. All right. Work activities. This sub paragraph B shall not go into effect until, which has been purposely left blank at the time, 2020 at 9:00 AM. Then this is, this is proposed, this is not in the ordinance. People may change, engage in the following work activities, construction, plumbing, electrical work, site development, landscaping, mowing, painting, foundation installation, septic removal or installation, building repair, veterinary services, appliance repair, vehicle repair, telecommunications, network repair, exterminator services, remodeling and heating and cooling repair and installation, provided however that these work activities may only be conducted under the following conditions. One, prior to working on the job site, a worker must initial, must initially inform, and that's been left blank to be determined. No more than two people may be present at any job site regardless of the type of work being performed. Workers must wear face masks and have hand washing in or hand sanitizer readily available on the site. And workers may not travel to and from the job site together. Workers may not share hand tools. Hang on. Workers must maintain a daily log of personal contacts and workers must maintain social distancing in the CDC and Rhode Island Department of Health guidelines must be followed. Nothing contained in this paragraph B shall be construed to override the self-quarantine requirements of this paragraph nine.
Thank you, Andre. Sven, do you have your hand up? You're muted.
Just clarifying, at the bottom, as Andre read it, the, it says telecommunications, network repair, exterminator services, heating and cooling repair and installation, those already were up in emergency. Oh, sorry, essential activities? It looks like they've been duplicated. So.
It was emergency. The other one, the other one was emergency heating, cooling, repair and installation.
Okay.
Fine. Yeah, but there's no reason to have both.
Thank you. Okay, you know, let's just debate the bigger picture.
Martha, you suggesting you eliminate that?
Well, if we've already got it listed as emergency, I think that, well, it has to be one place or the other. I, having them in both places is just going to make it even more confusing.
Discussion?
I would keep it up in essential, I'd keep it up in essential activities for those, for those definitions. It's just cleaner person.
Yeah, as you, I would too.
Okay.
Question?
Right, Catherine?
That would mean, that would mean that, just for purposes of clarification, the reason it said emergency in essential activities is that if you just wanted your vehicle repaired, but it wasn't an emergency, you could still do it under work activities. That's why there was a distinction between the emergency and the non-emergency.
But we were talking, just talking about heating and cooling repair and installation.
Right. And it's essential, the way it's written right now, if it's an emergency.
Right.
Right.
But it, but you might just have regular maintenance that you want done that's not an emergency. So that would be, did under work activities. And if you want to take that out, that's fine. I just am explaining the, the reason why they appeared in both places.
Yeah, Sven?
I see one as routine and one as an emergency. And I think we're trying to really account for those extreme situations. And vehicle repair was not up in the essential activities. That's still down in this work activity.
No, it isn't. It's, yes, it is.
It's up, it's up in, it's up in.
It was there originally.
Yeah. Sorry, my fault. Anybody's hand up? Sorry. It's silent, it's going over the room. Chris Willie? Chris, you're muted. You're muted.
Um, is this an opportunity to make a move or move the takeout establishments down to work activities so they don't become essential? To curb the, I mean, the, to Andre's point again, and I, and I, and I agree, and I've mentioned this to Catherine, it's, the term essential gives you kind of carte blanche to do what you want. And unfortunately, we have to take that into consideration. It sounds crazy, but we do. So you know, there's essential activities and then there's work activities that we're entertaining because we're going to roll work activities in at some date down the line. And I'm, I'm just asking it, when that, that takes, you know, when we do that, should that just be moved down to, to work activities and take out us, taken, taken out of essential?
I think farewell could be. Other thoughts? Andre?
Um, so this section nine B is pretty much opening the island. And I think we should discuss when this will go into effect before we discuss anything else.
Okay. Sven Riesen?
I, I think I, I would rephrase what Andre just, what Andre said. I, I think it is a phased approach to slow and steady versus, you know, full out opening. And I think at some point, and it'll get there in a second, we do need to begin to, in a controlled way, get people back to work. When we discussed this in the last two meetings, the point of this list was trying to identify those activities, I guess, where there's very little interaction. These folks are in isolation. They are not sharing copiers and computers and telephones. It is very difficult for these people to do any of their work at home or from a computer at home. So, so the idea was small phases where there's minimal increase in risk. And the plan of this is, yes, it's starting to phase approach, but I, I wouldn't say we are opening up the floodgates by any means. And at the last meeting, just as a point of reference, I did say a week and Andre reminded me. And so just to start the discussion, let's say this starts next Monday, just for a point of discussion.
Okay, so man. So, all right, so what was asked of Kathy was this at the last meeting. There was no talk about phasing anything, which I think is very important to do. I think like the governor said today, we need to do, we need to phase this in a safe, smart and targeted approach. I mean, it's been said many times, state borders don't decide where the virus comes, but I do believe through all the correspondence we've had in, you know, by being here, that the island workforce has been under quarantine for essentially three weeks now. So basically what this is calling for is effectively putting everybody back to work on a given date. That's what it says. That's the red thing on my thing says.
Those jobs that are listed in the, those jobs that are listed here, putting them back to work.
Listed there. That's what was up for discussion. So and, all right, so if we want to amend that to say safe, smart and targeted, I'll throw it out there. What if we send the lawn guys out there next Monday, see how that goes, give them a week, we revisit this. And then we start with construction and other single people working in offices, things like that. Well, I think, but so I'm just throwing that out there now because we're not obviously going to do this all at once.
Well, the indication I, if, obviously you've all, as I have been reading all the emails we've been getting and all the correspondence we've been getting to each of us. I guess as a point of order, I could say that the first trades that, that were chiming in were, weren't necessarily the lawn mowing services, I think what you're referring to. It was those trades that were doing small scale, small scale construction work and small scale site preparation, site work and that sort of thing. I know there's an indication from a few of the mowers that they're not ready to get, they don't have to get started for a couple of weeks. There are, there is some consternation out there. There's been some concern about when some of the, the brush clearing needs to be done or doesn't need to be done over, over timing in terms of animals and, and, and bird nesting and things like that. So I may not necessarily agree with your choice of the first area to open up. I would, I would, I would question that.
I just threw it out there. That's it.
I'm starting a discussion. I, I understand. I'm just saying that that would be my read on it. Sven Riesen?
Yeah, and I think, I think we can make this list smaller or larger. This was about isolated working. And just to make sure, from my perspective, this is a portion of the workforce. This doesn't include a whole lot of people. And so I think there's still a large group that is not able to go back to work. That may be the next phase to Andre's point, you know, go out. But these are folks that are on in ice, for the most part, up until veterinary services and added in, these were about people in isolated, one to two person work environments that, that wouldn't increase the risk of the COVID spreading. That was the intent.
Chris Willie?
Um, I guess it's a question for Kathy's. Because there's a lot of feedback from the segment that, let's just call it that work primarily in offices. The, the list that we have right now, Kathy, cross checks with the state as far as, you know, again, I don't want to use the word essential, but I have to because that's what it's listed under. There isn't anything on that. Um, there isn't anything on that list that contradicts the state right now.
No.
Okay, um, as far as, uh, like timeline, I'm, I've personally been shooting for at least a month, which gets us to next Wednesday, so I'm happy with that to, and again, to Andre's point, roll something in, um, if we wanna discuss that. My concern again is, um, the number of questions that we're gonna have beforehand. Um, the registration process, which, as I've read, I, it seems workable and doable. And, um, the enforcement end of it, so it's, it's kind of everything. Um, give it, give it a little bit of time to, for us to work out the kinks and, um, see what kind of participation we're talking about before we get there, because everybody's gonna have to phone in before then, or email, sorry.
And just to be clear. Martha, go ahead.
Uh, there, there are a couple of things. I think we were, we were only reason, I, I was looking at, um, mowing and landscaping first was because it was strictly outside. And, um, yeah, I was always looking at this from a tiered perspective. Because, and the fewer things that you, the slower you go, the easier it would be to pull things back if something, if things don't go as well as we want them to. And that was the only reason I had that ahead of, of construction on my timetable, only because it was the, the most, it was to me the most difficult to justify for telling people to go to walk in, I've said this before, and, you know, go walk on the trails, but the guy who, the one person who mows the trails at TNC can't mow the trails. And that doesn't, that doesn't compute, that's making any sense to me. Um, and that's where, that's where I was coming from. I do think the tiered approach is the only way we can do this. And it has to be slow, and I, I understand, everybody wants to, everybody wants to go back, and it's not picking and choosing. It's looking at some rational, um, justification or, um, reasoning behind it. We're not just picking names out of a barrel. That's it.
Yeah, well, I mean, I've walked several trails over the last week or two, and I, I haven't seen anyone that are, any of them there in dire need of mowing, just to that point.
Well, well, I think, I think we don't want them to become in dire need.
Well, they're not anywhere near close, so.
Yeah.
Uh, Sven Riesem?
Um, just, this original list, again, without veterinary services in there. The original list was really around those, again, isolated, all that, but, but didn't share, uh, equipment. So, so the reason that office work, uh, and Chris really brought up a great point, and we've heard a lot about this. But the reason office work wasn't included in this list in the beginning was you got shared copiers, you got shared phones, you got shared, uh, air, you know, and I, we all understand what's going on at the state level and the federal level and what we're learning. So as the first step phase, whatever you wanna call it, I originally thought about stuff where you, you were, had minimal, minimal sharing. And, um, and I think that the next step may be office workers or offices, uh, bookkeepers, whatever. But at this point, this seems to me this least risk trades, or least risk professions.
Especially with the conditions that are imposed and the bullet points below it.
A hundred percent.
That's what we have to remember, is that we're saying, yeah, you can do these things, but, but as you're doing them, you need to observe the following. And if I might inject at this point, that's one reason, and that was the reason behind wanting to have, um, the, the, these work sites register in and, and call in and check in with the town, so that the town can have contact with them when they, when they initial, when they start up. And the town can remind them that they can open and they can do some work based on the following conditions. And that if those conditions are violated or not met, then they will be doing something that we deemed unsafe, and that action can therefore be taken, whether it's by the building inspector or however, whatever's appropriate. But we wanna be able to have, to know if someone would, it seems to be a hobby these days of driving around and seeing who's working and who they think people think are working or whatnot. So when someone calls in and says, I see two trucks over there at such and such a site, the town, whoever's handling the phone call can say, well, I'm looking at the list and I see that they've registered and they have two people working there. So the two, the two trucks belong to the two guys working on that site. And it doesn't have to be a situation where, you know, at every, every, every site is suspect. So we want, we wanna know who's out there and who's working and try and maintain some sort of, uh, control. Andre Bujo?
I agree with Martha. I don't, I think this is a too big of a group to send back right away. And, you know, as you said, um, you know, people have been driving around looking to see who's been working, who's not been working, you know, that's just the block island way. This is just how they do it during a plague. When we're not having a plague, it's, you know, that's not his wife, that's not his, her wa, her husband. So I mean, you're not gonna change the way a block island operates. So, um, like I said, back to that, um, I really think that, um, that we need to do this in a slow and measured way, and I think that, I think that that, um, that list is a little too long to throw everybody back out there. But that's just my opinion. I mean, we can do it over a week. I mean, we can do one week, and we can do the next week, and we need to see how this is gonna go. And, um, like Martha, Martha said, when we do a, um, you know, when we do this, we have to do it safe and smart and targeted, and, um, you know, I just don't think that, um, putting everybody back, throwing everybody out into the streets at once is, um, is, is the way to go. I think mowing, like Martha, go ahead Martha.
No, I say, this, this is still a pretty narrow list. What's here?
All right.
And I, I really, I, I, I don't, and I, I appreciate your concern, Andre, but I don't, I don't see it as throwing people back out into the streets. I see it as throwing people into isolated sites where they're be able to do work in a, in a controlled manner and in a, in a, in a manner that, um, maintains social distancing and, and CDC and health, the health department guidelines, and be able to get, uh, you know, a, a, a relatively small but good section of the population back to work and, 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 and back in their, in their vehicles and back to sites where they can get something accomplished and, and not everybody, you know, not everybody is comfortable going on, going on the dole, going on, on, um, on, on unemployment for one reason or another. So it allows them to get back to work.
And I think we do have some safeguards in place with the lumberyard is only allowing one customer, uh, one trip a day. Is that correct?
I can't answer that.
Well, I, I, they did put out something. They, no, they said they were only having, people could only come once a ti, once a day to the lumberyard.
Case, then maybe it'll be the case, so.
And just to, I, I, cause I'm thinking about, we all know, everybody just goes, uh, the, the way I go to the grocery store, you know, construction guys go to the lumberyard. And, um, that, if that's cut down, that also cuts down, um, traffic and movement, that ability.
The other thing that you mentioned was the, was the veterinary services being added in there, and, and I think the concern about that was, um, and, and not as emergency, but as veterinary services, that we're gonna have a lot of animals out here, are gonna be due for their rabies vaccines and due for their, um, for their, you know, heartworm and everything else, the stempor, whatever else the vaccines they get. And, um, they're not, I'm not talking about allowing, um, dog grooming and pet grooming services, but seems like the vet services might be kinda critical.
Because that's, that's, again, another thing you don't wanna wait until it's dire. I agree with you, Ken.
Thank you, Martha. I agree. Um, discussion?
Well, didn't we already put veterinary, didn't we already put veterinary services under, uh, emergency, uh, uh, essential personnel?
I don't believe so.
I think, I thought we did because they basically come from the mainland.
Yeah, but I think we added under emergency, emergency.
Only emergency? Hold on.
Emergency or, um, pre-scheduled and or scheduled veterinary, emergency and or scheduled veterinary care.
Okay, it's already there. I've visited.
Yep.
Thank you. I stand corrected. Um, so that would be redundant, then you're saying?
To put into here, yeah, I, I would think so, but.
It's already, it's already covered. Thank you.
So can I make a comment on that?
Catherine?
Go ahead.
Yeah, my point was that when, when this goes into effect, that second part, then what we would do is remove the ones that are providing for only emergencies under essential activities, so that it won't be redundant.
I'm sorry, is that true then on all of those? So for example, right now it says emergency exterminator services. So that would then get, no, let me finish. That would get them removed from essential activities and fall into work activities, cause you have exterminator services?
Correct, because these were not supposed to go into effect until later on.
And let's just wait. Back up.
Sorry, now, can I keep going for a second?
Uh, uh, Sven, go ahead.
So Catherine, I think this is really, really important to Chris's point earlier, which I thought was very good. It, let's just, he said Wednesday, so whatever date is, when that goes into effect then, we are reducing the, the number of essential activity people, or to Andre's comment, the privilege. So they can't just go back and forth. I think that's a really good thing to do, is to peel people off of essential and put them into work. I like that.
Correct, and the reason, but the reason I had to put them in both places and want an emergency is because that second one wasn't supposed to go into effect until sometime later on.
But it, but it's new news to me, and I think it's real good news to me that, and I'll use, um, uh, emergency exterminator services as the example. Today that's allowed, uh, or assuming else I'll pass this, today it's allowed. But once the nine B goes into effect, put it Wednesday, then they are no longer an essential privileged group, they become a work activity group.
Exactly.
But what, but what does that do is travel to and from the mainland, because a lot of these are from the mainland. I thought that's why they were under essential. Like the vet comes from the mainland, the vets.
Right. I think they have to drive to their destination, let's talk exterminator, exterminates and drives back. Not allowed to go to the grocery store, not allowed to go to the post office, not allowed to, blah, blah, blah.
They self-quarantine while they're here.
That's the way it's written.
Following CDC guidelines.
Question? So if what you're saying is that there's certain of these emergency services which are only performed by people from the mainland, of commuting people, then they would need to remain under, those, whichever ones those are, and I would need to remain under essential activities to allow a person to commute with, under the conditions that are established earlier.
I think commute may, commute may be a, a bad term to use, um, but yes, if they, if they only come from the mainland, they, that's why I was asking. I think they have to remain essential.
Yes, if there's cer, certain emergency items that can only be performed by mainland people.
Follow-up questions, anyone? Andre?
Think the, uh, we can't lose sight of the fact that, um, we're trying to get our locals to back to work, not invite any other one, people here to go back to work. Um, I mean, that's, I think, what we need to stick to. We're trying to figure out how to get the local population back to work. They've been at this for almost a month now. I get it. It's time for them to go back to work. But I'll say it again, a safe, smart and targeted way of doing this is what we should be doing. And I say let, my, I'll repeat it, I just, I think we should let someone go to work first, we'll give them a week, then we'll roll it out, let people slowly going, because we're gonna put all these people back to work. We're opening up this ordinance again for more people to come. I mean, during a, cause, I mean, more construction, we have to think about the dump in the ferry schedule. I think, you know, there's gonna be more construction debris. Is the dump gonna be able to handle, they're gonna need more ferries, I would think, because they have more debris going on. Um, so can we just stick to maybe next week, mowing and outdoor work?
Chris Willie?
Yeah, I kind of agree with Andre, but I mean, why don't we, um, I mean, what are we talking about here? Like, why don't we allow the, the enrollment, let's call it enrollment, this whole week? And see what kinda numbers we're talking about and, and roll it out based on that. I mean, how many, how many businesses or how many people are we talking about? I don't, I don't know. Um, you know, is it a dozen mowers? Is it a, a two dozen construction crews? Is it, you know, let's, let's at least start the enrollment period. And then I think we can make a decision on the rollout for, for it all now, once we see it, you know, and that can start next week, but I wanna know what we're talking about and the impact it may or may not have. I don't think that's a big ask. Everybody's gonna have to check in with the building department. And, um, I think we should allow that to start now, and then knowing that it's gonna be dates next week, let's look at that enrollment and, and figure that out. As a suggestion, just my two cents.
Yeah, right. The point being, too, is that we're talking about rolling these things out, but again, rolling them out under the following conditions. And I think, I think, you know, I'm not sure how much data we're gonna collect by, by opening up for, for mowing for a week and, and making a decision based on that. I think that we've been, we've indicated, everyone, everything that people have been sending to me have been saying that they wanna go back to work. They've got, you know, one or two guys working on the site, they've been here, they've been in quarantine. They don't, they, they've, they've feel that they, they're not gonna try to do anything that's gonna endanger anything else. And, um, they should be allowed to go back to work, because, you know, unfortunately, some people aren't following the rules and they see other people doing it. And, um, they're trying to, they're, they just wanna do what, what is legal and, and under the ordinances and what's allowed under the ordinances and allowed under the ordinance that we are designing, saying what, how it should be, how it should be carried on and what, how it should be done. And I think it'd be a positive thing to get, to get people, allow people to do that. Martha, are you, do you have something you want, you wanna say?
No, I, I'm, I'm with you, because I think there are so many things that are not included in this right now. This is, this is still quite limited and quite restrictive. And I, I don't think gathering who's gonna go back to work is, is really, what are we, then we're gonna sort out who can and who can't?
Andre?
I don't, I don't, I don't see any rationale behind that.
Andre?
I just wanna ask, um, Molly Fitzpatrick if she's got any input from the public on this.
Thanks, Andre. I've gotten a couple of emails, um.
Oh, you have?
I have. Melanie Reeve asks, could you please ask the council what the difference is between a single worker on a lawn mower outside and a single worker using a different piece of equipment outside? What about site work with one person using an ex, an excavator? Excuse me, or other piece of equipment alone? Still outside, still alone and still not sharing equipment?
Right.
And then I have, um, another one, if you're ready for it. And this one's from Annie Hall. And Annie asks, for workers who both live and work together, could we allow them to travel together in one to three person crews since they've been together for over a month? And I think Annie's probably referring to, um, you know, landscaping.
I think probably. Thank you. Uh, Sven Riesem?
Um, just to, to go back on those two points, I think at this moment, um, uh, I personally like the way and the group of professions that are included in this, again, with all of the caveats of two people not sharing equipment, et cetera, as Ken said. Um, I, I honestly don't, am not in favor of three people driving together. I realize the fuel efficiency and the family dynamics, but one way to help increase enforcement is to say one person per car. And then if you see three cars that, at a site, that, that would be a good way to start driving in. Um, and I just think it's simpler, um, but that's my personal opinion.
Well, the other point too, is if we're gonna say no more than two people at a, at a job site, then it'd be, it'd be just shooting ourselves in the foot by saying you can travel three, three in a group to get there, so. I just, I think, I think there's gonna be certain restrictions that people are gonna have to. So I just, I think, I think there's going to be certain restrictions that people are going to have to learn to live with and, and then this, under this first opening phase, whenever it happens. And it's going to be a learning process and, and we're going to be, you know, we are going to be phasing things in as we go along. And, um, if we all work together and we all cooperate and everybody follows the rules and, and things don't start going crazy. Um, and what I mean going crazy, I mean, in terms of both, um, violation of the rules, but also creating a situation where medically it becomes a, a problem. Um, we are concerned, let's not forget why we're doing it. We are concerned about the health and welfare of the island. And we're, we're hearing people saying they want to keep the island safe. They want to keep it secluded to some degree. We're also hearing that people are saying, well, we're here, we're secluded, we're safe as well. Can we please work alone or work with one other person on a job site and get something done and go back to work? So that's, that's what we're trying to hammer out here. Sorry. Um, Martha, do you have, hold on, Andre. Martha, do you have yourself filled up?
No, I, I didn't. I, I, I'm agreeing with you, Ken.
Okay, thank you. Your, your phone just keeps lighting up on me here. Andre, go ahead.
Well, I think that we, I agree, Ken. And I think that we, um, we put in a very good health plan in the beginning of this for the, for everybody's, you know, for the health of the island and to keep people healthy and safe. Um, and now we're trying to put the economic plan, we're trying to roll out an economic plan. And I don't think you can have one at the expense of the other. So this is why I think that we, we should be doing this smart and safe and targeted. And I would think that we should get people working outside to be the first ones to go. Um, see how it goes. Um, and I, that's just my opinion. I, I think we should start with outside people, one to two to a group. Uh, you know, whether Melanie, I, I got Melanie, you know, and Melanie makes a good point. And, um, I mean, we could just leave the professions out of it and just use outdoor jobs as terminology for the first week. And then the next week, we could roll the next, you know, the next bit out. Um, you know, telecommunications, network repair, that's already an essential. Exterminator services, well, you know, I'm not sure what that means actually. Um, everything else could be put into a, uh, you know, in other places. And I think if we really just stick to outside work the first week, that would be best. I mean, I, you know, as you, I don't need to remind anybody that Rhode Island is still on the upward trend with this. And I, but I'm trying to, I'm trying to personally formulate a policy with that in mind, but also knowing that we've been under, you know, we've been essentially out here alone for, you know, with no, with no contact, I think, for two or three weeks. So it's time to get people back. But I feel safer with outside work. You know, people don't come into contact with each other as much. But, um, I'll, I'll just leave that comment there. I see Sven's got his hand up.
Sven, go ahead.
Um, it, I, I, I hear Andre. Um, I, uh, in an effort to try and, and get traction here, uh, I don't know, Ken, how you want to do this, but I guess I'd love to make a motion on nine B. Um, and I, I'm going to use Chris's words. It's been a month, uh, Wednesday. Um, I'll, I'll say I'd like to make a motion that nine B, uh, approve nine B as written, I believe. Uh, the blank in nine B on line one, prior to working on job site, a worker must initially inform. I don't know if it's designated by the town manager like we did before, or the land use office. Uh, I'll go to Jim's deferment on that. And I make a motion that, uh, we move on nine B.
But where, where are you, Sven?
Want to put a date on that? Wednesday. I, I was using Chris, I was using Chris's date of Wednesday as a starting point.
You're talking about the 15th?
The 22nd.
Well, he says the 15th.
No, oh, yeah, is that what you meant, Chris? The 22nd? I, I didn't know.
I think that's, that's next Wednesday. I mean, that's, that's, that gives us a month that, I mean, I prefer to go to two weeks now, but I mean, I'm going to concede, I'll concede Wednesday. But I know, I know Molly had a question about something, Ken.
House watcher, I think.
No.
Molly?
I thought that you had deferred the conversation about house.
Molly, is that you or Catherine?
This is Molly. Do you want to hear from me?
Yep, well, you do.
Thanks.
Yep.
Um, I thought you deferred the question about house watching to this section.
Did we lose Kathy?
No, I'm here.
Thanks.
Uh, house watchers, go ahead, Molly.
I just thought when you talked, spoke about house watchers earlier in the meeting, you said you were going to pick it up again in nine B.
Yep. Um, do you have any emails for us right now?
Um, yeah. I do.
You can't keep polling the audience.
Here's one from Allison Brown. And she says, how about they explain, and she's talking about the registration system for nine B. She said, how about workers explain their individual situation when asking permission to work? And the town evaluates on a case by case basis. It's targeted. And then I have another one. This is new from Wendy. I haven't read it, so I'm just going to go ahead. From Wendy Crawford. The point Annie was making would also include my husband painters who live together and rent an apartment from Annie. If they are, have been together for more than a month, why could they not share transportation? Andre is saying outdoor jobs. Well, that could pertain to both construction and painting. Assuming all of these people have been on the island together, is the concern that we have not all been tested? So one or more of these people could be carriers of the virus? And.
And social distancing. I mean, you know, they're traveling together, just to clarify for everybody. The whole idea is that social distancing, it's hard to be six feet apart in a normal car or truck.
Um, here's a question from Susie Weisman. She asks, why not limit work from off islander? Why not limit work from off island workers only? If no one on island can do work, someone unemployed can put out rat poison, for instance.
No, they can't actually.
And then, um, Laura Chadwick says, would you please mention to the council that house watchers could go under workout activities nine B?
Thank you, Molly.
You're welcome.
Andre?
This is Martha.
Andre?
Martha, I'm not trying to poll the, poll the audience. I just want to know if there's any input onto this discussion. And, um, the community input is very important to this discussion, so I'm not trying to poll them.
A motions on the cable?
Could I ask, I just wanted a clarification on something?
Go ahead, Martha.
It was my, I, it was my understanding that, um, something like an exterminator has been ratcheted up over the years and now you have to have some sort of certification under that because it's a hazardous substance you're dealing with. I don't think you can just send anybody out to, uh, use high grade, um, rat poison.
Thanks.
Anyone have any input?
Do we have the, well, first of all?
Do we have, we have, do we have a second?
What was the motion?
Sven, restate the motion, please.
Um, nine B as written start effective on Wednesday, the 22nd, I guess. Uh, and on line one, um, the blank would be designated by town manager or land use. Depends on what Jim wants to put in there.
I think it's, I think it's town managers designating the person.
Thank you. Town manager designate.
I agree.
And what, what happened to house watch?
Well, well, come to that. Let's just, let's get a second on here and then we can discuss that.
Well, I mean, wouldn't they go, wouldn't they be added to this?
I'll second it for discussion purposes. Go ahead, Andre.
Wouldn't they be added to this list?
Yes.
That, I'm, I'm perfect to add them to the list, but it's seconded. Uh, the only question is that they are not, there's nine days and right now we're in a pretty lousy house watch moment. Well, I'm just, I know, so you could have emergency, it could be essential. And then they drop down to Kathy's earlier comment to work activities if we have it in here on Wednesday, the 22nd.
I could live with that.
I think that's reasonable because I, again, I just don't think they're going to be coming over here in a storm to check a house.
So I amend my motion to include, um, house watching. Can you remember your second?
Catherine, did you get that?
No. I thought you were putting under emergencies, Sven.
Martha, what?
I thought you were putting it under essential, house watch.
I'm actually putting it under both because it'll flip to work activities once that goes into effect.
Okay. I didn't understand, thank you.
May I again?
Andre, go ahead.
I'm not sure everybody's clear as to what I brought up about under adding people to essential activities. Um, I think we can put house watchers under the activities that are listed in nine B um, without, um, having to add them to essential personnel. Um, so let me try to explain this a little clearer. Essential personnel, as they're described in their job description, means they can leave the island anytime they want um, and come back anytime they want and never have to self quarantine. So I feel as though, I don't think we should be adding people to self, to the essentials. Uh, because this just is going to allow, you know, give them permission, whether they do it or not, I get it, um, of traveling back and forth at, at will and not having to quarantine. So I don't, I don't know. I don't think we need to put house watchers under essential. Um, I think get them in nine B. And until then, um, they, until, until, what, what date did you say on this? The 20th?
Second of the, Wednesday, the 22nd.
Um, until the 22nd, they're allowed to go look at the houses. There's not, you know, obviously not allowed to go in them. So I would keep them off the essential list.
I thought it was only essential until next week, given consideration of the weather we're having right now.
Well, if we want to go stop putting all sorts of dates in there, you can do that too. But like I said, they can go to their own houses and look at them right now and see if there's anything wrong.
Chris Willie?
And we also have clarification from Kathy. I mean, we're specifying number of people, but it kind of goes out the window if, if you're not specific to the job site, meaning you could have two landscapers, two painters, two construction guys. And then you have a corona party. So can we?
Yes. This is Kathy. That's why I put in the list, no more than two people may be present at any job site, regardless of the type of work being performed. So that you couldn't, two of this and two of that.
Right.
Thank you. And Jim, can you speak to, uh, you know, is the building department? I think I read the thread, the building department's going to have some, in, something in place so when if Mark has to check a, a site or inspect anything, the people at the site can't be there or have to do something?
All right, so I don't know that he's worked that out entirely. He, he sent out an email that I shared with the council that, that identified what his thoughts were. I, I would give him some latitude to change it, as I said, um, with some other things. I mean, we want to, we want an implementation that works. But, uh, Chris is correct in, uh, the way I, I read Mark's, and I haven't talked to him verbally since that email. But, um, the, the way I read his email was that if he was actually going to get to the level of actually doing an inspection, which I, I don't anticipate a lot of that, um, what he was looking for was for the tradespeople to vacate the property there. Uh, a, a, any, any interaction between the two would be uh, between cars with windows closed, just so that people know that he's there and he knows who was, who was there and that kind of thing. Um, then he would do the inspection, then the communication would, would happen separately. Um, uh, in addition, just, uh, to, to, to implement kind of a registration and if you want to call it spot check or just checking up on, um, different sites, that would also obviously put a, um, a, a real, a real emphasis on um, proper spacing, but also wearing face mask gloves, et cetera. That we're not talking about putting employees and, and other people uh, in, uh, interactions that we want to be really careful with. So, um, number of those, those things need to be worked out, but I think, uh, we're on the right path.
Thank you, Jim. Uh, hold on, Sven. Andre?
Um, so, okay, just going to bring up a scenario. We have in our ordinance, you know, groups of five to match the state's, um, you know, emergency ordinance. So does that mean that, um?
That's not work site though, that's anywhere.
Okay, but so if two guys are shingling, can three mowers show up or a mower show up? There's three guys on a job site?
No, you just read that. You may be, only two people may be present on any, on any site, job site, regardless of the type of work being performed.
Okay, well, I think that just needs to be, that needs to be clear in the ordinance because people will revert to five and say five can be in a group. I'm just saying, we need to be abundantly clear.
We can certainly do that when we, when we, when the people call in the register and we point out to them the nuances of the ordinance. Sven Riesem?
Uh, made the motion to include house watcher into work activities. And the motion is only pertaining to nine B now. Um, I'm with Andre not putting them in essential. So they would be included in work activities, which would take effect, I said, Wednesday, the 22nd, in alignment with Chris. That's the motion.
Okay.
The revision has not been seconded.
Yeah, I seconded it.
Oh, good.
Discussion. I mean, the only other thing I would, I would ask, if I could interject at this point is, is I, I know you're looking for a full month or whatever, but starting in the middle of the week, what's the difference of starting in the middle of the week or starting at the beginning of the week?
When?
I want it, I want it to start at the beginning of the week, if you're talking about next week. Chris Willie?
Strictly me. I, I'm, I'd prefer to go to the, to the following week. I'm conceding the Wednesday, the 22nd because that's gives, that, that's put this ordinance in effect for one month.
Okay.
And that's, it's strictly a time, a time period, one month of, you know, and in that one month, we've only had one um, positive case. We dodged a few bullets, in my opinion, and I'm, but I'm, like I said, I'd rather go to the following week, but I'm conceding the one month so we can get this.
Thank you, Andre.
I agree, the same thing. I mean, you're going to have more support from me the further you put this out. Um, I was willing to send every, send some people out next week and slowly do it. But, um, the 22nd, I mean, like I said with Chris, I think a little later than that is, um, a little much, um, for everybody. But, um, from what the doctor and what we've been hearing, you know, this thing's going to peak, supposedly going to peak, you know, to be like around April 20th. Um, you know, I think I have to, I even, I don't agree with this. I, I, I I think it's a good, I think it's good, it's a good policy right now, um, to get people back to work.
All right, Sven Riesem, thank you.
Uh, with, stick with Wednesday. It's a compromise around the horn. I hear everybody. I, Ken, I would have liked to have gone Monday, as I said originally. Chris brought up Wednesday. I think that makes sense. It's a week, it's a month. Um, I would love to have votes taken.
Martha?
I, I would go Monday. Whoop, uh, I would go Monday. I thought I was on mute, sorry. Um, but that's majority rules.
Martha, what's up with that? Can you give me an explanation for that? Because I may be missing something that you're thinking of that I'm not.
Because it's like two, it's only two days and gets you through, and it gets you through the weekend and it provides a, a full week.
Okay.
I'm, I'm more near, I, I'd rather start at the beginning of the week when you, um, I'm sorry, there was a noise, I didn't know what it was. Um, I'd rather start at the beginning of the week.
I'm looking at it as a way of, uh, another few more days of.
No, I understand. I just told you what I, you asked me what I thought I told you.
Chris?
I certainly appreciate that, thank you.
Um, and Andre just actually just reminded me about, you know, the governor. Um, and Andre actually just reminded me about, you know, the governor, um, stated, or there's modeling, you know, we're looking at modeling Windsor Island at a peak and, you know, depending on who you or what you look at, it's, it's, it's been a pretty broad window. It could be the end of April to the end of May. And the end of April seems to be the, the major consensus and this just gets us closer to that. And then we're maybe, if everybody plays, plays nice in the state, never mind the island, we'll be on the downward side of it or the flattening side of it. So, I think that's something to keep in mind, especially as we move forward. Um, this is, I think we've done a, a, overall, a, a very good job of stemming the flow to the island. Everybody on the island, for the most part, is, has, has, um, done their part. And I think that's why I think next Wednesday, I'm agreeable to it, even though I don't think we're going to peak yet, but next Wednesday's a good enough date for me.
Sven Riesem?
Uh, per Kathy Merola, all the activities that we're talking about are permitted in the state. I just want to remind everybody of that, especially in the audience. Um, um, I believe on the table right now is Wednesday, Ken. I did hear some people that were aligned to Monday. Uh, we can always, we can, if it doesn't pass, we can always go to Wednesday. So, um, uh, and I hear Andre, I, later the better. So I've heard everybody, uh, my, um, motion, I'd like to amend to make nine B effective Monday and see if it passes with all the other words.
I'll, I'll second the, uh, my, my, I'll second the amendment.
And then I'd love to have a vote. And if it doesn't pass, we can talk about Wednesday.
All right. Um, motions on the table, um, to, um, pass nine B, to, to approve nine B, um, as written, um, starting effective, it would be, uh, Monday, the 20th, um, with line one being, um, designated on the bullet points being, um, to initially inform, um, the town as designated by the town manager. Um, and this will include house watching, will it not?
Yes.
Okay, we'll include the, the term house watching. All right. I call them out. Al's in favor. Uh, Chris? You're muted.
No.
Okay.
Nay.
Andre?
No, I think I should go out further.
Okay, uh, Sven?
Yes.
Martha?
Yes.
I'll vote yes this time. Motion carries, read it to. Um, Catherine, do you have any questions about that?
Uh, yes, I do. Um, so to Andre's point, we have the essential activities and there are certain emergency ones. Now, once some of these emergency ones become regular activities that you can do as of Monday, then the emergency status of those will lapse. However, what I don't know is in the emergency list in essential activity, which ones need to stay emergencies because they can only be performed by people off island.
Okay. Ken, go ahead. Uh, who's right? Uh, Sven?
Um, my feeling is, uh, I don't want to pick and choose. There potentially could be a designator here, uh, that can do some of those. I, I think we just let them go from essential activities to work activities. I really, um, agree with Andre. The less we have as essential, the better. So I would just as well say, for example, emergency heating and cooling repair, if it was essential and now on Monday, it's enacted under work, then it drops off of emerg, of essential. The less essential, the better. I'm, I agree 100% with Andre.
So for example, emergency telecommunications network repair. If there is no one on the island that can, I just want to talk practically, you know, how it's going to work.
Problem. That could be. Go ahead, Catherine.
Yes, that's, that's what I'm saying. That's the problem because if it drops off the emergency list, you're not going to be able to come from off island to fix telecommunications network.
I think, I think, I think there's a couple of things, there's a few things that need to stay on the essential list.
Yeah, that does. What else?
Veterinary, veterinary services does. I think exterminated does. I don't know the law, but I, I think it does.
Yeah, I think it does too. I think for safety's sake, it does. Um, we don't want a bunch of people throwing around dog poison or rat poison.
Yeah.
Freudian slip, sorry.
Turns into dog poison. Um, do we have, uh, do we have HVAC people? We don't have any heating and cooling. I mean, cooling repair.
Oh, heat, not, not, I don't think we have any air conditioning on the island.
It's May 8th. This is through May 8th. So I don't think we need, uh, air.
Okay. Um, so that was just, that was just ones that jumped out at me.
So telecommunications, veterinary.
I'm sorry, the only other thing would be banking, um, sending over the Brink's truck, I guess. Maybe that's coming already. Is that included under that?
In essential activities.
It's not included under work. So, so we're going to take out veterinary telecommunications and extermination from work activities and keep them in essential?
I would.
Kathy, that was a question to you.
Uh, my, my point is that it could be in both places because you could have, you could have, uh, emerg, I don't know if there's, if there's someone on the island who could perform some of the, the network repair. That could be under that, uh, works, that work section. My only concern was, is if I eliminate it from essential activities and it's something that has to be done and nobody else can do it, then I've made it so that no one can come to the island and, for example, repair the telecommunications network. Well, emergency vehicle repairs, that I assume can be done by people on the island. So that can come out of essential activity.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, Ken, if I could, I would, I would be careful, I would be careful with that too, because I, I, I think most, most everything that's in here probably should stay. And I understand what Andre is saying about trying to be as minimal as possible in the, in the, uh, essential list. But if there's some kind of repair that requires somebody to come out, fix a truck or something in local mechanics, and I'm not an expert on what everybody can do and not do. We've got a lot of emails about telecommunications and I do think people's communications get, given the circumstances being, in some cases, essentially shut in. So, um, I, 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 I don't, I think, I, I, as it stands now, if we're going to do it tonight, I would leave everything that's in there, in there. I think we might also leave open the opportunity to review it. Uh, say maybe myself and Ken, since we do most of the answering of these questions based on people's, uh, inquiries and Kathy. Um, and if we can get something out, we'll get it out.
Andre?
So I was going to say, I agree with Jim. Um, you know, we have dates on these, May 8th, you know, the 20th and whatnot. Obviously, we're going to be meeting before then for something. And if issues come up, we can discuss them then. Um, my, my, I don't, I'm, I wasn't saying taking anything out. I, you know, I just didn't want to keep adding to that list.
Right.
Um, are we done with this topic?
I think so.
I hope so.
Yep.
Martha?
How do you want to move on? There's no, the only other change is, um, the last, right after paragraph nine is the, uh, removing the term shelter in place, um, definition.
Well, that's not that, that's just been relocated, hasn't it?
Right, exactly. Yeah, that's the only thing I was just making a point of.
I make a motion, Ken?
Hold on. Go ahead, Andre.
No, Sven, as long as it's not a motion adjourned, but, uh, but go ahead, Sven.
I think we still, we, we passed portions of this.
Yeah, right.
But we haven't passed the whole resolution. That's all I want to make sure we do.
Right. Discussion, Andre. Go ahead.
Just that I think it should be abundantly clear that, um, we're trying our best to get this, um, to get people back to work and maintain some semblance of safe, public safety. Um, just, but I think, I don't know, I can probably share all your thoughts that if things start to go sideways, we will meet right away and lock it down again. Summarily lock it down again because, um, we will have to. And, um, but this is, I think, a good move. Uh, I'm happy with it.
Thank you, Andre. Uh, any other discussion? Martha?
Um, no, I don't have any discussion, obviously. I think this ordinance, more than any other, is it, is really going to have to be dynamic. So we, it will be changed. But this is, I think we're at the place we need to be right now.
Thank you, Martha. The only reason I called on you was because your, your microphone was lighting up again for me, so.
I don't know why that's happening.
It's just, it's just noise, I think. It's all right. Um, Catherine, is there anything else you need us to talk about before we make a motion in terms of the entire ordinance?
Um, well, only, my only procedural question is, I will try to get this out, um, I'll try to get this out tonight. I, I don't know how long my computer is going to be working with the battery.
Your power.
Um, what?
Your power will be on, yeah. You don't know how long. Is it off now?
Oh, yes, I'm still, it's still off.
Okay.
And I have a certain limited time left on my, um.
And start typing.
And I can, I might be able to make my phone a hotspot so that I can, I can email it out. But do you just want to, whatever I write, or do you want to look at it first to make sure that, you know, all my notes reflect what you want?
We'd like to look at it.
Okay. So do you want to continue the meeting till nine o'clock and approve it? Or what do you want to do?
I, I don't want to speak for Kathy, but if she's working with no power, I think nine o'clock's pretty ambitious.
I mean, in the morning.
No, I'm still saying that. I mean, you might want to go a little later. So if you have to wrap it up tomorrow, it's,
The current ordinance is the.
Whatever, your network, whatever, that, that's asking a lot to me.
The current ordinance doesn't expire till Wednesday.
Yeah.
And we don't know right now. I mean, so far, I think we've all got our power, don't we?
Catherine, do you, Catherine, if you have any questions about any, any, any particular items or if the council has any questions, can we just, um, poll you or, or, or talk to you individually and just to make minor corrections if they're necessary?
You could do that, but you could only do it by phone as long as my battery holds out on my phone.
Right.
Yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to push this.
Okay.
Or you could email it out. If people were okay with it, they can respond, I'm okay. Or, uh, I think you got this one sentence a little wrong.
Right, but see, my point, my point is.
Power.
It's voted tonight.
All right. Go ahead, Kathy, please.
I mean, I guess I could go in the car and drive and, and turn on the car and try to do it from the car, but, um.
No, but, but the point, your point you're making is we have to reconvene in order to approve it.
Yes, that's what my point was.
Okay.
If that's what you want to do, unless, unless you make the motion, you know, to adopt it as is, and then I'll send it out.
Chris Willie? You're muted. You're muted.
This one, this ordinance doesn't expire till Wednesday, right? Like you said, Ken, five o'clock Wednesday?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we have till then? So we want to reconvene Wednesday morning at nine or however? I mean, what, what are we talking about? Letting Kathy? I don't want to put Kathy in a position where she has to work in her car to type this up. That's kind of ridiculous. We have till next Monday, as it's been voted on so far to, or actually, I'm sorry, Wednesday, I guess.
Wednesday.
So, I mean, let's, let's just set a deadline by Wednesday. And if we have to reconvene, which we do, then let's do that. I don't want to, I don't want to make her do it in a car.
Right.
In the dark.
All right.
You know, she has no power.
I'll make a motion to, uh, to continue this meeting on Wednesday morning at nine o'clock.
I'll second it. Um, but can we, um,
Second by Andre. Question? Go ahead, Andre.
Um, just to summarize the meeting and what we decided on the important part, um, island workers, uh, is given by the list, landscapers, construction, and, you know, list stuff like that. Um, we're going to be allowed to go back to work on 4/20.
Yep.
Okay. That's a.
With, with, with limited conditions, as, as limited, as listed. Sven?
Very significant. To that point, I guess, uh, the, the point on Mon, on Wednesday at nine AM is to make sure that alignment with what's been voted on, not to re-discuss this, right? I just want people, when they leave here, to know that decisions were made and let's just make sure that the words match the words.
We'll be here to approve it.
Thank you. That's a way to, thank you.
Anything?
One, one, yes, one other question because I did lose power in the middle of a discussion. Um, the part where we had nothing contained in this paragraph shall be construed so as to prevent, instead of, you wanted to change it to a homeowner.
Yes.
Who is under, or, or, no, I know what it was, a person, but they have to go directly back and forth. That's what the final resolution on that was.
Uh, I stand corrected. Somebody want to clarify?
I think that was right.
Yeah, I think that's right. That's what my notes say, but I lost some power and some conversation in there.
All right.
And, and as importantly, Kathy, on, uh, page four, the third bullet, uh, was struck, workers may only come.
Yeah, I got that one.
Okay, thank you. Looking forward to seeing everybody on Wednesday.
Um, motion is made by myself and seconded by Andre to, uh, continue this meeting at nine o'clock on Wednesday. Um, I'll do a roll call vote. Andre?
Aye.
Uh, Sven?
Aye.
Chris? Chris? Just lost Chris. Martha?
Aye.
Chris, you're freeze framed. I'll wait to hear from him. I will not assume anything.
He froze. Hey, Molly?
Yes?
Um, before we wrap, I mean, you got anything else?
Um, I don't think I have anything you haven't heard.
Okay, I just want to check. Just wanted to make sure we got all the, um, public comments before we.
Chris, you there now? You're pre-muted still.
He said he doesn't know why we have majority.
What?
Muted.
I texted him. He said he doesn't know why. I said, we lost you. He said, I don't know why you have majority.
Well.
There he is. He's back.
Okay, good.
Just waiting for your vote, Chris.
I said aye. Thumbs up.
All I saw was a blank screen. Sorry.
No worries.
carries. Thank you all. We'll see you all on, or hear you all on Wednesday morning. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.